All right, everybody, we're going to get going here. I'd like to welcome you all to the December 11th, 2023 Board of Education Work Session, and we are going to start with the roll call. It's two people to do Kinsey's job tonight. All right, Lynn Garlock, here. Laura McCoy, here. James Lierley, here. Laura Layton Warren, here. Brian Mills?
Here.
Hey, we're all blanking on Nancy's last name. Welch, my god! Nancy Welch, here. It's no problem. Yes, Andrew. Okay, so we're six board members present. Andrew Becker is excused, and we got a big crowd of students coming in. But as they do that, we're going to have the two intercity student council members introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Fieva Winkler. I'm a senior at Southwest, and I'm the president of InterCity Student Council.
Hello, my name is Andres, and I am a junior at Preble High School.
Welcome. Okay, so the next on the agenda is under open forum is recognition, and I am going to throw that to our superintendent, Dr. Claude Taylor, Jr.
All right, thank you for that. Board members, we have Principal Courtney from Preble High School. She will introduce these wonderful, wonderful students and what they are going to present and what they are about. Principal Courtney?
Wonderful. Is this on? Yes, all right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to showcase some of our involvement. So our theme today is our career and technical education, co-curricular activities and classes. So I'm Courtney Keen, the principal at Preble High School, and joined with me is Mr. Anton Belzer, one of our associate principals, Mr. Bob LaCapton, one of our associate principals, Mr. and Ms. Andrea Porter, our business education teacher, and Ms. Tracy Robbiss, our culinary instructor. So first off, I'm going to turn it over to our amazing students, who are going to share some of their involvements, some of their community activities that their groups are involved in, as well as some of the accomplishments and awards that they have recently received. So with that, Preble Culinary.
Oh, this looks like food is involved, which is always, always welcome. Yeah. January 1st. For those of you at home who can't see what's going on, we are presently getting set up to sample some, no doubt, delicious food from people in our culinary class, and this is new territory for us. And by the way, we could do more of this.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ava Verulo. I'm a student at Preble High School and currently in the culinary program. I have been in the culinary program for three years. I started off when I was a freshman in Culinary 1, and we started off by learning basic skills that you would need to learn, such as knife cuts and regular things like that. And as we progress into Culinary 3, we learn about catering events and how to run a restaurant and things like that. And our most recent catering event, we are catering for 1,700 people for, no, no, sorry, sorry, 700 people, and we're making 1,700 desserts. And that will be on this Thursday at the Eisenhower Elementary School. I have always been interested in culinary, specifically baking. When I was a little girl, I always wanted to be in the kitchen with my mom, making desserts and things like that. And so when I went to middle school and high school, I always knew, I was like, I really want to get into culinary. And having this program has been such a fabulous, um... Sorry, I forgot the word I'm thinking of. Such a fabulous opportunity, yes, thank you. And next year, I'm going to be going to NWTC for my first year at college, and I'm going to be getting my Gen Eds. And then next year, the year after that, I'm going to be going to Fox Valley to get my baking certificate and hoping to become a baker when I'm older. So I thank you all for this opportunity to come and talk with you all, and I hope you guys have a great rest of your night. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. How many, how many people from the culinary, well, it's really loud, the culinary class is here tonight? It looks like we have maybe eight or nine altogether? Yeah. What's that? I know they're in their, they're in their uniforms, and they look really great. Again, like, the people at home can't necessarily see you all, and so I just want to let them know that you're in your full-on chef uniforms, and it's really wonderful. Thank you for coming and sharing with us tonight. I really appreciate it. So Claude, I think you wanted to... Oh, oh. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Sophia Young, and we recently competed at the finance pool, and we won overall for our regional. And... And essentially, I'm just here to talk about today how important it is to learn about financial situations like that. We were asked a lot of questions about, like, situational, and it was really beneficial for us to already have learned about a lot of the things that they were questioning us on. And we realized that a lot of the stuff we're learning is, like, real-life situations for finances that we'll need to learn. And it was really great to already have that pre-understanding of what needed to happen. And it was a really great experience overall, and I loved competing, and I love competing for the school.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
For people at home who might not know what DECA is, can you just give a brief description?
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely, whoever would like to do that.
Hello, my name is Emma Dormbush, and I am, this is my second year as Prebles' DECA president. So what DECA is, is it is a business club, and we compete in role plays and have a test. So for example, I am in entrepreneurship category, so I will take a 100-question business test surrounding entrepreneurship. And then I will also have two role plays, which we have 10 minutes to prepare, and we have to solve a problem such as, for example, coming up with a marketing campaign or deciding if we want to expand our business, and we present to a judge. So DECA has been really impactful for me, and a lot of my members here would agree that it has taught us public speaking skills, just like I am speaking to you all today. I would definitely not have been able to do this if I wouldn't have been put in situations where I've had to talk in front of people I do not know. It has also taught me basic business knowledge through the tests that will really help me, no matter what career I go into. And it also has taught me on-the-spot thinking, as our judges actually ask us a question that we have no idea what they're going to ask us. For example, they just were like, so you are coming up with this marketing campaign. What's going to happen if they, like, throw you a curveball? And they make you kind of think on the spot and come up with something to just kind of make you think on the spot and just come up with something creative. So DECA is just a really impactful experience for me and a lot of my members, and we are really excited because this week is actually our district competition. So we are really, we're going to work hard, and we are hoping to bring home some DECA glass. So I'm going to pass it on to Ava.
Hi, my name is Ava Hazuka. I'm the vice president of Community Service. Community service is a big part of DECA. One of the big events that we participated in this year was called Tricker Can, which is a nationwide DECA event focused on donating to local food pantries. This year, we donated all of our food to Prebles' pantry. And then another big one that we're doing right now is a donation drive for St. Vincent's and Aurora's Cancer Facilities. Last year, I started the project with another DECA member, and we awarded second place at the state level. And then I had the opportunity to compete at the international level in Florida.
G'day, my name's Ellie Sky. I'm an Australian exchange student. I've been in the States for 11 months now. I joined DECA only three months ago. Again, we don't have this in Australia, so it's been a really cool opportunity. So my first competition will be next week, districts. Wish us luck. Hopefully, we'll get some medals and stuff. But no, DECA, it's opened me to, like, marketing and things, which I did not know of kind of before I came here. So now I'm actually thinking of taking it into university and doing that as a course, which it will open me to so many job opportunities. But not just that, I've met some amazing people being here. I love all of you guys, absolutely amazing people doing this, and they always are. So thank you. Um, did you guys have any questions you wanted to ask us or anything?
Yeah, anybody have any questions? I think, I think we're good, but thank you very, very much for coming tonight.
Thank you very much for having us.
Oh, hang on, we got, we do have somebody, Lynn Garlock would like to say something.
It's not a question, I just want to say this, folks. I might be the only person in this room that's a retired high school speech teacher, and I just want you to know how wonderful it was to hear these students speak like this. Nobody read to us, nobody had anything memorized, that they were trying to grasp from their memory. Everybody just talked and communicated. You did the best job at that podium that I've seen in a long time. Thank you so much.
I also just wanted to add, this is another one of the great, many, many opportunities that we offer as a district here. It's great seeing the high schoolers perform and present and everything with that. And we also, this past weekend or two weekends ago, I had the opportunity to go see the play at the musical at Southwest, and it was amazing, but I don't know if anyone heard the low brass section in the pit orchestra, and the trombones was spot on. So I don't know who was playing the trombone, but that musical was fantastic.
Yeah, the trombone really stood out. Yeah, yeah, so I mean, it's wonderful to have students come for us to be reminded yet again of the wonderful things that they're doing and the people who are guiding them through that process. So, um, yeah, I can't get enough of this. This is wonderful. So thank you for making the effort to come and share with us tonight, and I congratulate you all. Yeah, thank you. I didn't get one. Yeah. No, no, that's okay, they're going to bring me one, yeah. Yeah.
I didn't get a fourth though.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, um, so the next thing on our agenda is, uh, following with the public forum is we do have someone who is wanting to speak, so... Okay, is, um, is Mary Yang here? I don't see her, so, okay. Oh, is she online? Yeah, it said I would like to speak during open forum. There is a phone number. Yeah, here. Okay, everyone, just bear with us, Josh is going to give her a call. Okay, um, I, I think there's some possibility that maybe Ms. Yang is, as Laura mentioned, confused about the time wasn't posted for 5 o'clock, and she might think that the meeting started at 6:00. So how do we make provisions for that if she?
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah, but I'm not sure if it would happen later today, this afternoon. It would... I'm not... Okay.
Laura, Laura, Mary is on hold, waiting to speak.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. I think that solves that problem, so...
Hello, this is Mary.
Mary, Mary, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. All right, you have five minutes. Please state your name and your address. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Mary Luya, and I live at 364 Lynn Drive. I'm a parent of a child who attends the Green Bay Public School, and I'm also a part of a coalition called Asian Allies United, formed by parent advocates and local leaders whose mission is to support Asian students and their successful futures. But first and foremost today, I actually want to, I want to thank the administrators and the school board for your collaborative efforts in creating a more inclusive environment for our children. You know, especially the first week that Ku Chang, who was newly appointed as associate principal, who had walked through Preble, kids were very excited. They came home, they told their parents about it. They said, "Mom, Dad, we have a new associate principal, and he's Hmong," and they were so excited. So there was lots of conversation on that, that was, that was very positive. Secondly, students at Langley Elementary, they had expressed their, they had expressed interest in wanting a safe and comfortable space to share and express some of their experiences, and that may be outside the norm for some of these, for the general population. And for example, there was a fifth grader who had wrote a piece on something called the sacrifice chicken, which is, which is a story about a chicken that was sacrificed in traditional Hmong offering at funerals. So, you know, stories like this are kind of hard for children to explain to other kids and maybe look at as something negative. But when it's actually normal for these students to experience in their life, just not be able to talk about it at school, you know, creating these spaces were actually a wonderful thing. So the multilingual teacher, Megan Rudolph, kudos to Megan Rudolph and her team for creating a safe space. And they had created a place called, a club called Multilingual Club, which is amazing for these elementary kids who were asking for it. So it, you know, it kind of speaks that at such a young age, the kids are just looking to connect and, and talk about things that are just, that they experienced but unable to, to share. So, you know, another thing too was Megan and her team was able to actually go out and apply for a grant, and they had, they had won the soup grant and got like $1,880 to support this club, which is amazing. So it's another amazing thing that they had, had done this. And the soup, soup is, is actually called, the acronym is Support of Urban Projects. And they had actually won, they were voted, they had the most votes on the night of November 30th out of five different presentations, and they actually, they won the most votes to support these multilingual students from all different, all different languages. So just kind of wanted to put that shout out, out to Megan and her team. And the last thing was, on December 1st, there was a Lombardi Hmong New Year, and this was actually open to the public. So, you know, from my understanding, at first it wasn't, and then it was, and so it actually became a great event. So they said, I just want to put it out there that, you know, thank you so much for, for helping create such like, a fostering environment for these students. They were actually, they were actually very excited to be able to cross that bridge between like their culture, the things that, that they're experiencing, and literally have that hosted at a school. So it literally crossed paths with the, with the papaya-making contest. There were some people were to portray and show off some of those skills. The writing and art project, which they were able to, a student actually won, um, won an award for, for sharing their, their piece on how their Hmong flag would look like, because there isn't actually a Hmong flag ever. So she, she was able to display that, and kids were able to display their talents, and people were able to come on stage. Everybody was invited to come up to do line dancing, ball tossing, all that stuff. So I just wanted to send a shout out, you know, a kudos to that. Thank you so much for creating that type of environment. And, you know, I'm hoping that kids are even hoping that next year they're able to, to display more of their talents that they were just talking, talking at the event. So I'm hoping that this is something that, you know, we can continue doing and working together. But this is really what this call is, what my speech is for, is just really saying thank you, and, and these kids really appreciate it, really, because it comes from these kids that are asking.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, um, I think, I'm sorry, I neglected to mention during recognition that you had something to say in regards to that and to talk about what you are wearing tonight.
Thank you, Board President, Board members, and everyone that's watching. So I was very fortunate to be gifted this vest along with a pink Q U E E J. It is a Hmong instrument. They started their New Year's celebration on the 1st, and I was inducted into quasi the community, and they gifted me this. This is a Hmong vest in back in Laos that they didn't have banks. So they took the money that they earned, and they would put it on their vest. So actually, this vest would be about 60 pounds that they would wear. And everything, even the chain, was made out of sterling silver. So they wore around their investment as they moved. So I just want to thank the Hmong community and all the elders and all the clans that I was a part of on Saturday. We had a wonderful time, and publicly, I want to thank you if you're watching this so much because as they, they brought me into their community.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much for sharing that, so... Okay, then we're going to move on in the agenda. The next thing is the, under education, the 2022-23 Annual Progress Report and School District Report Cards.
Okay, I'm going to go through that. All right. The district's mission is vital to the work we do each day as it guides our purpose, our mission to educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. When we say the word "all," that includes all 18,900-plus students in the district. As the 2022-23 School Report Cards depict, our school district continues to grow more diverse racially, ethnically, and socio-economically daily. On the 2022-23 School Report Card, the district's overall score was 58.2, meets expectations. This was a slight decrease from 2021-22, which was 58.3. For our school report cards, there was a 12% increase in the number of schools that improved the category, and 16% decrease in the number of schools that were either in need of improvement or failed expectations. So we are trending in the correct direction. Two highlights on our state report cards were GBAPS was the number one in the state for the most students graduating with college credit, and number one in the state for the most students receiving industry certifications. At any time, Board members, you can always stop me if you have any questions. We're looking at the district's overall achievement and growth in ELA and math. We remain behind the state in areas. For chronic absenteeism, a higher score is better. So in the area of attendance, we also lag behind the state. There are several initiatives underway to address absenteeism, to name just a few. Student Services has been working with the School and Community Relations Department on its social media strategy. We are utilizing infrastructure to promote real-time data analysis. We are looking at ways to leverage Panorama to support individualized goal development and progress monitoring.
I just want to say something about this. James, James Lierley and I recently went to a meeting out at the STEM Center at the UW that addressed chronic absenteeism. It was a very interesting room of people. It was led by our district and facilitated by our district, and we had a fair amount of people from our district there. But there were also people from surrounding districts. There were people from law enforcement, there were people from the county. There were counselors and SROs, and there was a judge, Child Services. Yes, there were, there were a lot of stakeholders in that room, all very concerned about what they're seeing around chronic absenteeism, and everyone basically acknowledging that this is something that needs to be addressed as soon as possible. So I just wanted to share that because I learned a lot about, not just about our district, but the districts around us and what they're up against with regards to chronic absenteeism. Thanks.
Graduation rates, that's for the 2022 was 87.4, but we still fell behind the state average of 92.2. Initiatives are underway to address graduation rates. I wish to highlight just a few. The Board adopted, as a newity, a credit recovery program, which I personally have had success with in Detroit Public Schools. We project 100% graduation on our goal, should be to graduate every single... We project, project one hundred percent graduation on our goal should be to graduate every single child this upcoming school year. In addition to the district state report card, the district creates a college and career readiness scorecard, which provides data that we believe are also important in determining a student's future success. There was some movement in the right direction, including more students involved in workplace learning and an increase in the number of students taking dual credit courses. The high school readiness scorecard measures how ready our middle school students are for high school. As our scorecard indicates, there's much work to do here. To be done at the middle school level with only four point five percent of our students meeting overall readiness. Thank you. Now I'd like to direct you to how we plan to move forward. Our goals, priorities, strategies, actions for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The goal in collaboration with our leadership team for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year will be to achieve excellent and equitable outcomes that raise the bar for all and eliminate gaps between student groups. The goal areas are graduation, attendance, ELA literacy achievement, mathematics achievement, and a student's sense of belonging. Our goal for graduation and attendance for this school year are one hundred percent of our students will graduate with a cohort by the end of the school year. Our average daily attendance rate will be ninety-five percent or higher by the end of the school year. Our goals for the ELA and literacy achievement are we will increase ELA scores for grades three through eleven on standardized exams by five percent. Moving from our twenty-three percent to twenty-eight percent of students being advanced or proficient. In addition to address one of our greatest gaps, we will be looking to move our ELA scores for our African-American students by ten percent. Our goals for math achievement includes an eight percent increase on the forward assessment for math. Moving from twenty-nine percent to thirty-seven percent advanced proficient. For our African-American students, which again is our greatest gap, the goal is for the students to have a ten percent increase in the forward assessment results. The good news is that one of our goals set for this year has not only been met, but exceeded. Our goal was to have ninety-five percent of our students in grades through three through twelve, complete the panorama SEL survey. Our participation this fall was ninety-five point four percent. Sure. So the pan, the panorama data is a social emotional learning survey that we gave to our students. Basically, it's an affective uh, survey. We asked students, how do you feel about your teachers? How do you feel about your school? Do you feel safe in your school? Do you like your principals? So it was a lot of about fifty affective questions that we asked the students. How do they feel about their current environment? You're welcome. We will be looking to create measurable goals based upon the survey results after we gather a baseline for this school year. In order to achieve these goals, we have set district priorities to be successful. We need to focus on a small set of priorities and have the discipline to stay focused. The priorities are ensuring high-quality, laser-focused intentional instruction in every classroom for every student. Implementation of board-approved, high-quality ELA and math curriculum with integrity. Using technology to gather, monitor, and analyze evidence of student learning. And timely responses to student needs through interventions and increased access to support. In order to stay, in order to stay focused on the priorities, we are taking strategy actions that are shifts in the system as we work to meet or exceed our goals. Some of these actions include increasing visibility of goals and working directly with students to promote personal goal setting throughout the system. Emphasizing observation and feedback practices in a culture of trust with our leaders. Modeling gradual release of responsibility practices to increase student engagement and deeper thinking in the classrooms. And redefining approaches to planning and collaboration so educators have a real-time evidence of student learning to work with. So that ends the, that is the, um, this is not working long, but that ends the uh, the report. Any questions, board members?
Anybody?
Alrighty, thank you.
All right. Okay, um, next is uh, the um, school year calendar. And we're being joined by uh, Miss Akibair.
Hi, good evening. The calendar committee convened in October. Uh, we had about five meetings total with the goals to continue working on eliminating the early release days because we recognize that it's a places a burden on our families and uh, it's not great for our staff either. We also needed to address the twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five NFL draft that's going, going to be in Green Bay and reduce the number of school days in June to align more closely with our neighboring districts. We came to the board in November and asked for permission to apply for a waiver with DPI. I'm pleased to say that DPI approved our waiver last Wednesday uh, that will allow us to start school prior to September first of next school year. The calendar being presented to the board includes teachers' first workday uh, being August nineteenth. Students' first day of school, August twenty-sixth. We were able to eliminate all early release dates. If you remember back two years ago, we had seven. So we slowly whittled them down and we're down to zero. We eliminated the weather makeup day in May that had been a holder for us. We will still have two days built into our calendar for weather and then any day beyond that, we would go asynchronous. We would not have school April twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five of two thousand twenty-five. Uh, April twenty-third would be a teacher workday, but it would be remote. It's the end of a grading period, which is why we wanted to make sure we gave them that time. The school year would end on June fifth for students, June sixth for teachers. And we can do all of this just by adding five minutes of instructional time to each of our school days. Uh, just a final note before I answer any questions that you might have, this calendar committee who I listed on the memo, um, they're an amazing, amazing group. They challenge um, all of our thinking. And uh, the brainstorming with that group is so collaborative. Um, it's actually enjoyable and I'm proud of the work they did.
Thank you. Questions, anybody? Lynn?
Excuse my ignorance. I have not had children in school for a long time. Explain to me about early release days and why you had them and how you can just get rid of them.
Right. Um, it's not easy, but uh, we end up making professional, what are they? Uh, students get out half of the day. Some students don't get released until one o'clock, so it really leaves a little time remaining. The remaining time is for professional development. So if we can make it into a full day and have part of it be teacher workday, part of it professional development, it's easier for our staff and for parents.
James?
So where did you put the five minutes? I'm making the assumption that you tacked it on to the end of the day?
Right. Uh, it will be on the end of the day across the board uh, for transportation purposes. And also because we are still really hard trying to work on the school start time task force recommendations. So uh, once the board approves this calendar, the calendar committee is going to reconvene in January and we are going to start work on tackling a twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar that can be one of the best we've ever had in taking a look at school start time.
Thank you. Brian?
I appreciate you mentioning the school start time and you know, as I've said before, with the changes that we're looking at, this would be a great opportunity to take in that work. So I appreciate that you had that on hand and it's still on your plate for it. So thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Vicky. Okay, on to operations. The next um, item on our agenda is the budget update and we're being joined by our CFO, Angie. Welcome, Angie.
Good evening, everybody.
I should say Angela Robley.
Yes, thank you. Um, so this is going to be brief. Uh, this is probably the shortest amount of time I'll ever be up here.
Um, don't say that, you're gonna jinx it.
So just an update on the budget deficit for twenty-four, twenty-five. So of course, um, we should be used to hearing about this year. Um, when I came to you in September with this update, we were sitting at about a six and a half million dollar budget deficit. And we have um, worked to get that down to two point two million dollars. So if you recall, um, like the major, you know, the major adjustment in the budget model was that two point four million dollars in savings um, and in cost reductions for the closure of Keller Week Weak and Tank. So that includes the FTE salaries and benefits and then also operations of those buildings. Um, so that was the biggest change. And then throughout, we had um, in October, of course, that was when we certified our numbers. So making some budget adjustments, there were a couple of things that were being projected out as ongoing costs, but then um, sitting down with some of our departments um, realized that some of these one-time expenditures were one-time with Esser funds, so we did not have to carry them out. So that also resulted um, in about a million dollars in savings, mostly around um, curriculum and then some transportation um, that was associated with summer school. Um, so just a, just a reminder that Esser funds must be spent by September thirtieth of twenty-four. So as we plan this year um, on what we are going to do with those funds, we can also shift some of those funds um, to cover summer school for next year. So anything that comes from June through September thirtieth of twenty-four, um, we will be able to claim some of those funds as well. So there, there, there may be some shifting and planning as we move, um, move towards the end of the year. Um, but of course, uh, we are, we're watching and making sure that, that we're doing the right thing for next year as well and this year. Um, last year of the sixteen and a half million dollar operational referendum is twenty-six, twenty-seven. I bring that up because that's going to come, that's going to come quickly. So that'll be part of that next biennium budget. Um, so we continue to look forward to the deficits that we're facing in those years. Um, and then of course, we're working to right-size through attrition. Um, once we get the results in June, right, we'll, we'll have a better idea and plan going forward on how we're going to address, address those deficits. We also, um, as you recall, we have put some money aside into our Fund Seventy-three or our trust. So we can use that to cover some of our expenditures that we are now um, are, are expending for our post-pension liabilities. Um, so there are some things that um, we're planning for now that will help us in the future to reduce those deficits. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. Does anybody have any questions?
Um, I don't have a question, but I, I, I just um, want to comment that as we've gone through this process, that's a long process that isn't finished. Um, we've been able to work on that, that deficit without laying off anybody, without canceling any programming that I'm aware of. I mean, to me, this is a huge thing to celebrate, even though we're not out of the woods. And, and you know, any, and anything that, you know, the next couple of years are going to be, you know, there's that deficit will likely inch up again. But, but the fact that we've been able to make this progress without having to do those two things is um, a monumental achievement. And I congratulate the staff that have worked. Oh, I don't know. So many people have had a hand in, in that, including you, Angie. So I really, I just really applaud that. Um, again, we're not out of the woods. It's always, there's always going to be a tension between what we want to do for children and what we're able as far as financially. So, um, but that to me is worth noting. Anybody else? Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is our referendum survey results. And I believe we're being um, joined by Pierre Hibner? Did I get that right? Okay. From the Donovan Group. Welcome.
Um, so good evening, everyone. Uh, it's great to be with you tonight. I'm gonna go from a script. I'm not gonna be like the students. So I was happy to be here for that. My wife, my wife actually was a DECA teacher in Dane County for thirty-two years. So I'm well versed in that program. And then she came to work for us. I used to be the communications director for Middleton and did our culinary arts program. So I'm familiar with both those programs. So my name is Perry Hibner and I'm the lead survey strategist for the Donovan Group. I'm excited to share the results and analysis from the community survey we administered on behalf of the Green Bay Area Public School District. Now, I also shared um, about ten slides. I don't know if there'd be an opportunity for the folks who are streaming live on YouTube to see that. Lori, do you know? It'd probably be better than the report, just nothing wrong with the report, but I think they'll appreciate seeing that more than going through all the questions that were in the report. I will say while we're getting that up, before we get into the slides, I want to provide a little background information for everybody here. Over the past two years, we have worked with approximately forty-five school districts in the Midwest administering surveys. During that time, we have administered approximately twenty community surveys, yours is a facility need survey, but as a community survey, obviously considering we reached out to not just internal stakeholders, but everybody in, in the area.
So, so you do this work, I mean, other districts are facing, they're, they're facing the same kinds of challenges that our district is with regard to referendums and the timing and, and what they should include and, and you know, just kind of judging as to, yeah.
What I always said when I was in Middleton, if you're not a growing district with enrollment, the way the state has set up funding, um, even if you're flat or slightly growing, you're going to be faced with, with some sort of referendum challenges, whether it's capital or operational. This obviously is capital that we're looking at here. But if you've got a, if you've got an operational referendum coming off the books in twenty-six, twenty-seven, like was just covered, that's going to be something you're going to have to consider as well. So, um, you know, from a timing standpoint, um, historically in Wisconsin, uh, referendums that have taken place during presidential elections or gubernatorial elections, so twenty-two, November twenty-two, or in this case, upcoming November twenty-four, have had the most success. Um, I would say April elections have had the second most success. What has the least success are special elections. Most districts have gone away from those.
Yeah, this is how we, this is how we fund education now in our state.
And you, and whether it's right or wrong, I mean, that's probably a different discussion for a different time. But having said that, I mean, it, that school boards and school districts have to think in terms of, you know, what's, what's going to have the best impact for their students and their staff. So. Okay, we can go on to the next one. And thank you very much. So, um, we are often asked about scientific versus convenience sample and some wondering if a convenience sample provides valid results. What I'll tell you is if you think about it with, let's say, the governor's race in twenty-two or the upcoming presidential race, those are scientific polls you see, although you've probably noticed over the years, they've become even less accurate in, in terms of things. So in a convenient sample, what you do is you ask everybody to participate in the survey and then some do and some don't. What we find with school districts is people, everybody says they want to participate. Obviously, we don't get a hundred percent participation anywhere. But the thing is, if you don't offer that, then you're going to have people complain that they weren't given an opportunity to voice their opinion. With any survey, the higher their participation, the more accurate the results will be. A good completion rate for surveys is around ten to twenty percent. Although the bigger the district and the bigger the community, the smaller sample size you're going to have. I'll talk more about participation rates in a bit. What I will say is the data in the report and what we will What I will say is the data in the report and what we will cover is very good. One other thing I'd like to remind everybody, we are supporters of public education and certainly are happy when results from a survey are positive. However, our number one goal is that they are accurate. We also like to stress that a survey is a snapshot in time. The only thing I can guarantee you is the results would today would look different a month from now. Due to variables a district can control, along with a great many that you cannot. We can move on to the next one then. You can see that the survey, we kept the facility need survey open for two weeks. It isn't included in the report, but nearly eighty percent, six percent of those who jumped into the survey completed it, which is a very solid completion rate. We don't like to see people jumping off somewhere between page one or in this case, page six or seven when this one finished up. We had two thousand six hundred and thirty-nine people complete the survey. I will tell you when we administered a survey for you in May of twenty-twenty-two, we had a little over thirty-four hundred. So that's about a drop of twenty percent. We, we are finding districts we work with on a continuous basis that they are seeing fewer people taking surveys, no matter what type we offer. I'd say it's usually more like ten percent. But again, I don't have a good reason why. That's something we're going to have to study more, but it's not atypical. What, what we saw here with yours is not atypical. Of those who took the survey, five hundred and one were placed in a comparison group, which represents about nineteen percent of the total number of participants. That is why what we typically find in community surveys is the vast majority of people who complete school district community surveys are families with children in your district. So now if we move on to the next one, we'll talk a little bit more about how this works. So you can see that there's three groups that we're going to have with a lot of the data we look at. Some of the questions or statements will include two groupings, all respondents and the comparison group. Starting with question or statement number nine, there will be three groupings, all respondents, the comparison group and a weighted group. I have a two-year-old grandson, so I compare the three sets of data to the porridge and the three bears. Most community surveys include a vast, vast majority of completed surveys from district staff and families. So those all responses can be skewed, or for the analogy, they're too, too hot or too favorable. On the other hand, because the comparison group is made up of individuals who don't have a direct relationship with your district, those results can be too cold or unfavorable to continue the analogy. So we also include a weighted group. We don't say that our surveys are predictive. Again, they are a snapshot in time. A lot can change between now and an election, both good and bad. But we have found that our weighted results and other community surveys have been within a couple of percentage points of an election result, provided what was asked was similar or identical to what was included in that survey. And you might ask yourself, well, why do you go with a thirty percent weight for affiliated community members, members who have that direct affiliation and seventy percent for those who don't? Well, in almost every community, between sixty-five and seventy-five percent of eligible voters don't have a direct affiliation with the district. So we kind of split the difference and go with seventy percent. So I just want you to understand how we, how we did that. All right, next one, please. So more than sixty-six percent of all respondents and just over fifty percent of the comparison group are satisfied with the district. That is a decline of about six percent from all respondents and about fifteen percent with the comparison group from April twenty-twenty-two. I would suggest that additional conversations would be beneficial to identify possible reasons for the drop over the past eighteen months. What I will also suggest is additional engagement efforts over the next year would be one way to raise the percentage of those who strongly agree or agree with those statements. They're not bad, but I will say most districts are probably, that we work with are probably in the seventies to eighties. So, next one. Lori and I talked, we thought it was important to show the satisfaction levels over the last three surveys we've administered for the district. So this shows satisfaction levels for all respondents based on the three most recent surveys. And you can see that there's been a nearly ten percent drop since twenty-nineteen among those who strongly agree or agree that they are satisfied with the district. So again, there's work to be done. You know, you certainly don't want it going in that direction. We want it going in the other. Next slide.
Can I, can I ask you a question? Um, have you, for other districts in the state, do you, do you see anything similar? Because I, I'm wondering about the effects of COVID, mostly the pandemic. I mean, left a pretty big mark on public education across the country.
And I live in Dane County where we were some of the last school districts to open during the pan, during the, the heart of the pandemic, if you will. And, and I'll just use Middleton example where I was the communications director. We were a district that was growing somewhere between, and this, this ties into satisfaction. Bear with me for a second. We were a district that was growing by somewhere between two and four percent annually. So we didn't face a lot of the same financial challenges that other districts faced. In fact, our challenges usually had to deal with facilities because we needed to add space. We decided to stay closed and I think other than Madison, we were the last district in, in Dane County to open, which means we were probably one of the last handful in Wisconsin to open, bring back any students at all. Since the pandemic, we've dropped by five hundred kids, almost all at the elementary level. But again, and I, I used to remind the school board and my wife is now the school board president, it's all about decisions you make, priorities, right? You have to own the decision that you made, that you kept schools closed. And there was an impact, a consequence to that. Not saying it's right, I'm not saying it's wrong, but I would say that districts that probably stayed closed longer have seen their satisfaction levels drop. Districts that were open probably have seen their satisfaction levels stay about the same. I also think that, and I did not a judgment, but I think people are probably more vocal about how they feel about public schools now more than ever before. So, and we just have to be aware of that. And I think that's part of the political climate we see as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Now I will say that the twenty-nineteen there, and I thought we had a new version. So sorry that this one says that. That should say comp for comparable. So this, these three columns, and that's okay, but they're the comparable, that comparison group, if you will. So this, these show the satisfaction levels for the comparison groups of the three most recent surveys. And you can see there's been nearly an eleven percent drop since twenty-nineteen among those who strongly agree or agree that they are satisfied with the district. One last thing I'll remind all of you, and then we'll really get into the data about satisfaction levels. With some districts we work with, they'll ask us to ask kind of a general referendum question. We were not asked to do that here. Okay. So in this case, this is going to set your ceiling for support of possible solutions. The higher your satisfaction levels, the more likely there will be support for solutions, provided they're the right solution or options and that tax impact has been determined. So I guess what I would say is in some senses, if you have satisfaction levels in the sixties or seventies, and again, we can look at weighted as well. You're not, probably not going to have more support for a referendum question than that. Because if you think about it, somebody who's probably not satisfied with the district, it doesn't matter how good your solution is out there, they're probably not going to support it. It's just, and that's, that's true anywhere. That has nothing to do with Green Bay. That is what we find anywhere we work with. All right, next slide, please. Oh, yeah, that's right. That's right. I'm, I'm bad. More than ninety-four percent of all respondents in the comparison group indicated that they were well-informed or had some familiarity with the district's needs. In April twenty-twenty-two, more than twenty-three percent of respondents indicated they had no knowledge compared with less than six. He commended for its effort to engage and inform stakeholders about its needs, which likely explains why so many answered the way they did. Here's the challenge. This presents, the challenge it presents is that in most, in most of the community, based on the survey results, the majority of people may have, may already be setting their views regarding your facility needs. I always tell districts when they have twenty percent or so who don't, who say they don't have any familiarity right now, that's an opportunity to engage them, inform them and get them to understand how you got to this point, what, what, you know, needs, process, solution. That's what we talk about all the time. Okay, next slide, please. All right, now we're getting into the crux of those questions. You'll see we've got the weighted group on all these from now on. More than fifty-eight percent of all respondents would support a referendum to construct a new elementary school on the current Kennedy site and consolidate MacArthur and Kennedy Keller Elementary Schools. Meanwhile, more than forty percent of the comparison group and nearly forty-eight percent of the weighted group strongly agreed or agreed with this statement. I often also get asked at, when I do presentations, well, how much can we change that over the coming months? Keep in mind, you've got most of your, most of your community has said that they have an opinion about these sorts of things. What we find is that if you do a lot of engagement, you can usually move the needle two or three points. So when we look at that group, that weighted group there, you have the opportunity to get it to fifty, fifty-one, but you're probably not going to get it to fifty-five or sixty, if that's what you're, you know, if that's your goal, for example.
Go ahead then.
Just please redefine for us, remind us what is comparison and what is weighted. You, you defined it at the beginning.
So again, all respondents.
Hit your, hit your microphone, sorry. Yeah.
Oh, does it turn off when somebody else got you? Thank you. That's why I thought about going to the podium, but oh well. We talked about all respondents. I think everybody understands that. So with the comparison, first of all, those would be people who don't have a direct affiliation with the district. So again, they would be, and, and it could, it could be grandparents who have children in the school, but we don't consider a direct affiliation. Residents who don't have any connections to your school, maybe never had children go to the schools. The weighted group then is we take that comparison group that I just talked about and we give them a point seven weight. And it's not as simple as giving the all respondents a point three weight because we remove a couple of groups. But so, or we add something like preschool-aged children, families, we put them in there, even though they may not currently have a child there right now, because most of them are going to have a child in your school. And so that's how we come up with the weighted. I'm going to tell you that of, of those three categories, I think you should focus on the weighted the most when you're looking at the data. And what I always tell people, because I, I may get asked it tonight, so I'll just be preemptive here. They'll say, well, what do you recommend? I recommend you trust your data. Don't listen, I mean, don't, it's not about, not for me to offer an opinion. Trust the data because the data is strong. Okay, next slide, please. And then, and these next two or three slides are going to be fun for you because they're, it's really strong results, okay? Nearly eighty-four percent of all respondents would support a referendum to address secure, adding secure entrances and offices to secondary schools, making ADA compliant upgrades and safety improvements to restrooms. That number seventy-one percent of, almost more than seventy-one percent of the comparison group and more than seventy-six percent of the weighted group. We usually find similar statements on community surveys fare the best of any that are included on them. So again, this doesn't surprise me at all, but it, your community is telling you how they want you to spend these dollars. Okay, next one. More than seventy-six percent of all respondents support a referendum to do, address deferred maintenance projects. That number is more than fifty-eight percent of the comparison group strongly agreed or agreed and more than sixty-five percent of the weighted group. Again, really solid results, although it is a decline of about seven percent among all respondents and about eighteen percent for the comparison group when we asked a similar statement in April twenty-twenty-two. Again, so very strong, but just want to throw in the history there because that is a question we asked us the last time as well. Next one. Nearly seventy percent of all respondents would support a referendum to make, to make additions and renovations to schools for the purpose of improving instructional spaces and/or addressing space and capacity issues. That number dropped to just over fifty-two percent of the comparison group, while the weighted group is more than fifty-nine percent. So again, if you're looking at that weighted group on all three of those questions that were asked, very solid support, very solid support. And then your last one. More than sixty percent of all respondents would support a hundred and fifty million dollar referendum to build a new West Side Elementary School, make needed safety and security improvements and renovate select schools to provide appropriate learning spaces. As the district projects, the referendum will have little or no impact on the mill rate. That number dropped to a little more than forty percent for the comparison group, while the weighted group was at more than forty-eight percent. Again, about five to seven percent didn't have an opinion. We included that on this one. So there is an opportunity to raise support, but I'd suggest not really much more than two or three percent. Lastly, it should be noted that a dollar amount in tax impact were not included on the April twenty-twenty-two survey. And I know you made a decision to go forward. So this time though, the community knows, which I think is good. It's always good to be transparent. But you know, this is different from the last survey we administered for the district. And with that, that's the highlights of the survey. I don't like to go through every question. There's no reason for us to go through all the demographic stuff. You've got the report, you can go through it more. But I'm happy to answer any questions people have. And I'll try to remember, hit the mic if somebody asks me one.
Other, James?
I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. You indicated that this was not predictive. It is a snapshot in time. But then you constrained us to say that snapshot in, in time is probably accurate to two or three percentage points. And that's given significant communication and outreach. Is that how I should interpret this?
Yeah, yes, it is, James. And the one thing I'll say is what I always tell communities is that if you can tell me whether you're going to go in April or November of next year, that inflation is going to drop down to, let's say, one percent. And that the economy is going to continue to bounce back in the right direction, which it appears to have done. I'm going to tell you these numbers are going to probably be, get a little better for you. All right. On the other hand, though, if you have a crystal ball and I don't, and that inflation is going to go back up to that eight, nine percent it was, you know, a year plus ago, I would say that these results become somewhat meaningless. All right. And that's, so that's what I say when I say snapshot in time. I'm not, I'm not saying they're not accurate. They are. But the hard part is that's a variable that none of you at this table can control. What you can control is making sure that everybody in your community understands, again, why you're considering doing this right now. I think there's also a segment of any community when they hear a mill rate is going to stay flat. And some people don't like hearing about mill rates. I used to emphasize it all the time in Middleton, but some people say, well, the mill rate's flat, but my taxes keep going up. Well, you have to remind them this because the value of their home keeps going up, right? That's a good thing, but it may not feel like it when your taxes are going up in the short term. But you have to remind them again about how you got to this point, the options you're considering. The fact is, is I assume you have a fair amount of debt coming off and that's how you're able to keep your mill rate flat. And there's consequences for not, for having the mill rate drop and the community needs to understand that as well.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. It was very interesting.
My pleasure. I'm, I'm heading home tonight and I have to tell all of you a story. Some of you are old enough to remember this. You over here are definitely not, but I used to come up to Green Bay a lot because I was a sports editor and sports reporter for the station. I am going to head home tonight because the last game I ever covered in Green Bay for the Packers was the Snowball in nineteen eighty-five. All right. I was in, I was in penny loafers, walking from the Buccaneers locker room all the way across the Packers locker room. That was a day when there was about forty thousand people in the stands and they were all deer hunters because nobody else could get to Lambeau Field. So, but thank you for your time. I very much liked coming to Green Bay. That was probably the one day I wasn't quite so happy about coming.
It was wonderful to have you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is a referendum update. Josh is going to give us a, a bit of an update as, as, as he always does. I always love these updates.
This one might be shorter than Angie's even though.
Okay.
So first of all, you will be seeing, there's a different schedule in December because of the holiday break. So we have a regular board meeting next week. You will be seeing a proposal to award a bid for the Baird Playground at that time. In terms of the other things that are in process, Preble continues to, to make good progress on the grandstands. I just drove by today and it looks like the grandstands themselves are, are up. There are no stairs or ramps or anything and the press box isn't up quite yet, but we continue to make progress there. We were also able to take advantage of some decent weather last week and we got the, the field people back out to Southwest to, to continue to work on, on that softball and baseball field. Other than that, you'll be seeing, you'll be seeing general contractor recommendations coming up for Preble and the second phase, I guess, of West. We are continuing also to meet with the architectural design firm on the, the West Stadium. So a, a lot of construction will be ramping up in April, May for most of those projects. The weight room at West is, is currently underway.
I did see the pictures shared online. With regard to the bleachers at Preble, they're quite impressive. I'm really looking forward to seeing it all completed. But just those pictures give you a pretty good indication of how large and what that seating is going to look like eventually. So, anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you, Josh. Okay, that completes our agenda for tonight. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Posed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school districts website, www.gbaps.org for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.